Okay, it looks like we are on air and live and recording. Okay. So, good evening, everybody. I'm now going to call to order the November 18, 2021 regular town board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber, here. Councilman Delarata. Councilman McPartlin.
Here.
Councilwoman McGraw.
Here.
Supervisor Syad.
Here. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, we're now going to move on to approval of the minutes. First, I have the minutes of the September 28, 2021 regular town board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? I see no changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And those meeting minutes are approved. Next, we have the meeting minutes of the October 4, 2021 special town board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes? I see no changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. And lastly, we have the minutes of the October 21, 2021 regular town board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I do have one requested adjustment. It was to Leslie Gold's statement in a few lines down where it says, "Human Resources Generalist in the Municipal Division of the State of New York." Supplant B for A. Are there any additional changes? Okay, with no additional changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And those minutes are approved. Okay, now we have the public hearing. Will the clerk please call the public hearing?
A public hearing regarding opting out of retail cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments in town.
Thank you. So, the public hearing is now open. I did receive one emailed request letter to be read into the record, so I'm going to do that first. And then, at that point, the floor will be open for anyone else who wishes to speak on the public hearing. So, this emailed letter was submitted by Jeanne Orr. And Jeanne writes, "I sent the following as an email to you and the town board members. I'm writing to strongly support opting out of cannabis dispensaries and consumption sites in the town of Niskuna. The Cannabis Board has yet to release all the rules and regulations surrounding dispensaries and consumption sites, and the town should review the facts before making a decision that can have a lasting impact on our community. Furthermore, cannabis consumption sites are problematic for several reasons. One concern is the issue of what happens when patrons leave the site after consuming cannabis. It is known that marijuana use significantly impairs judgment, motor coordination, and reaction time, making driving dangerous. Currently, there is no proven technology to quickly detect impaired driving due to marijuana use. Another concern with consumption sites is that staff in these lounges would not be protected from secondhand smoke exposure, as are other workers by the Clean Indoor Air Act. This not only impacts these workers directly, but also rolls back the progress we have made in making smoke replaces the norm. And norms make a big difference in what is acceptable and appealing, especially to young people. Similarly, a proliferation of cannabis dispensaries normalizes and makes more accessible a product that can have a negative impact on the physical, mental, and social health of young people. Because accessibility matters, the town in 2017 changed its zoning law to restrict new tobacco retailers to locations at least 1,000 feet from schools. This is partly in response to the fact that the number of tobacco retailers in the town had increased 50% within a few years. I've lived in Niskuna for almost 25 years and appreciate that our town values and community and promoting good health. I hope we will continue in that same vein and opt out of having cannabis dispensaries and consumption sites." And that concludes that emailed letter. So, with that emailed letter read into the record, the public hearing is now open for anyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing.
Hello, I am Jean Sossnow, 37 Dublin Drive. I'm president of the Niskuna Community Action Program. And I'm here tonight in support of opting out of licensing cannabis dispensaries and consumption sites in Niskuna. The local decision is required by December 31. As yet, the state has not released guidance about the regulations controlling the licensing process and the operational practices. It makes sense to give yourselves the time necessary to make the best decision for Niskuna and the community by opting out now. As you know, NCAP is dedicated to improving quality of life in Niskuna and specifically preventing youth substance misuse. For marijuana, that means educating the community that just because it's legal doesn't mean it's safe. Whatever your opinion about adult use, I think we can all agree that our children and teenagers should not consume marijuana. The medical research is clear that early usage negatively impacts brain development, cognition, memory, and mental health. Early initiation has been linked to heavy or chronic use as an adult. In addition to educating about harm, NCAP's prevention efforts include working to reduce access and communicating disapproval through policy. Locating dispensaries in town gives the exact opposite message. The community can also be negatively impacted by dispensaries and consumption sites. There is an increased risk of drug driving and car accidents. There is increased pressure on the police force. Technology for testing for impaired driving is not yet available. It's important to recognize that the black market has not been reduced in those states that have legalized marijuana. Tax revenue has often been cited as a benefit of permitting a dispensary in town, but it may not necessarily be as predicted. In states that have legalized adult use, it takes years for the revenues to build. Many of those states have decreased their revenue projections. It has been estimated that for every dollar of revenue, $4 is spent for increased law enforcement, training, car accidents, mental health, addiction, and healthcare services. I want to thank the board for already including language in existing regulations that prohibits dispensaries within 1,000 feet of schools or daycares and prohibits smoking and drug use in parks and recreation areas. I believe opting out of dispensaries and consumption sites across the community would send a strong message to our youth that we in Niskuna care about their health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And the public hearing is still open. And one final reminder that the public hearing is still open if anyone wishes to speak.
Good evening. Lorene Zabin, 2455 Brookshire Drive. I'm here to comment and ask you not to pass this new town budget. You've entered things in it that I'm not sure were here when we had a public hearing on the budget. And I find out recently that an additional $25,000 has been added to the Controller's Department. I don't know whether, frankly, it's gossip or if it happens to be true. But the rumor is going around town that the Controller, who I think has a tremendous financial interest in Niskuna, even though I understand now she is living in New Jersey, which is a first. I don't think we've had, we've had people live out of town, out of the county, out of the, and now, of course, we have people living out of the state, which I regret as a long-term 43-year-old resident paying taxes. As long as our employees come from the county or the state, I guess we have to allow it. I don't think we have to allow people living out of the state. Next thing you know, we're going to have people with passports living out of the town of their employment. I also feel that the budget where you all tout, you tout that it's only $17 million. Now, I commented at the public hearing, and even though I haven't, I didn't come to the last public hearing for other reasons, I did want to be here tonight. Well, I feel that the current board is responsible for what is going to guide the next board, and that may not be within their scope. They may have other ideas. When you say that we're not, we have no opportunity to get any of the benefits of other counties such as a pickup day once a year. Glenville does it very successfully with Scotia. We used to have pickup in the way of our leaves and brush, and now we pay $50 a year as a taxpayer. And I resent that. That was taxpayers' money that we now have turned into a fee process. And I don't know why. I know the appointed town board member was aware of it because she was part of increasing a fee service. And I'm only bringing this up because you have an opportunity tonight to revisit some of the salaries, the raises, and what is going to be governing the town for another year. And I resent it. We're not approving housing developments. We're approving apartments. And I think that's also an insult to what is a 14-square-mile town. We're going to end up being an apartment town and not a residential town. Now, I don't know whether all of these changes are possible, but I'd like to still be around when they are possible. I'm tired of all of your manipulations with bonding and scheduling. There isn't a regular agenda tonight. Do we have any, any fee transfers tonight left over from the old budget? And another thing, I resent people who come up here and not criticize sometimes what you guys do. I don't care what party you're from. We're neighbors. We're a community. We're not some big manipulative town. I thought we were an honest, ethical, brilliant, you were all degreed, all have wonderful opportunities to lead this great town. You're sitting in a wonderful building that was by the town board approval. The people that lived here voted for it. I sometimes wonder if the board even knows a taxpayer existed. The people that I see here, I don't see you people here. I see staff people, and they have to interpret a lot of what you people do, and nobody basically criticizes you. We've had board members who have things under their eyes at committee meetings, and nothing has ever changed. We continue to do the same thing over and over. I am asking you, I am hoping there might be some interest in canceling this budget and maybe giving it a few timely hours of your precious time doing whatever you do when you're not in here. And I know, I know you haven't been here. You're doing this kind, when I can come up, and I'm pretty lame at this point of my life, and they're sitting home. Why are they sitting home? Why aren't they here? Isn't this part of your duty as an elected official to be at a town board meeting? I wouldn't miss it. There are, let's see, 21,000 people. Where are they? Are they out dancing? Doesn't anybody really care about this town? I'm very disappointed. I would hate to leave this town in a mess. And also, now, I know you're wearing masks. Why? I'm 10 feet away from you. I can go in a grocery store. I can go have dinner. I have had all my shots. I assume you've had your shots. I assume no one in this room has the temperature because you have to take it before you come in. Now, I have a little hard of hearing. I've asked you to check out, these microphones have got to be 15 years old. Have they ever been tuned up? I can't hear someone talking through a mask. You're talking through a mask. Who, I don't see people on some of the other businesses, and a lot of them aren't wearing masks. I think they're very important when they have hundreds of people coming in and out of their premises. I want to know where you get your directions from. Now, we're all sitting here like good little kindergarten with the masks, but I can't talk a two-layer mask to someone wearing a two-layer mask, and I really don't know if this thing is working. Now, I was told that it is tuned on. But I also feel that this room, we had this audio taken care of 20 years ago. I don't think we've had an audiologist in here in 20 years. I think those things would be worthy of our taxes. I think people that can take their streets as if they own their streets and would go against our comprehensive plan. This is the town board's responsibility to the town, not to the people who live on the street that they don't want through traffic. Well, this doesn't make any sense to me. Almost every person that stopped the comprehensive plan that was formulated to make the town safer, the people on the street were accommodated by the size of their front yard lots. I don't know whether anybody knows that. That was never brought up. All we wanted to do was to satisfy the people that was going to have this rush of traffic go in front of their houses. I resent that kind. We are a town. We're not a street. We're a community. We've had people down on Route 7 in Lori Lane who basically called a cul-de-sac that was never on the board as a cul-de-sac. You can check me out. I was here when that street was designated. And the reason it was designated because there were properties on Lysakil that would be using that to offset some of the traffic. And especially Lysakil Road where the water lines, if Mr. Yedder's here, are probably two feet from the asphalt, always breaking. These are the things, and in the 20 more series that I've been out of work, I don't mean out of work because I was fired, I was retired, but the fact remains that we don't even have state confirmation of our sewer and water plant. We don't have any contracts, thank God, to dump other people's refuge into our sewer and water. And every time, I don't think we've ever had a legal accounting of the amount of money that has cost the taxpayers in the sewer water plant with all great prospects. And the poor people that live on Whitmire, never, we have never resolved those huge trucks that are going back and forth. I don't think there's any trucks going there now. The people on Whitmire must be disgusted. I never see those wonderful people. They're residents. They live here, and they have these trucks going in front of their properties. Well, it was almost every day except the weekends, I'm sure. Anyway, I will conclude. I'm boring. People really don't want to know any of the historical parts of the town. They don't know what went on before you all came here. And I'm not sure any of you were born here. I wasn't. We are a community of neighbors. Our streets were designated that way. Our whole town attitude, everything that was the walking, the path, everything we did, the parks, we tried to keep the town, and in a flash, it's all discarded. And the taxpayer and the resident is hardly considered because the board has had final votes. They've had the majority. We had that terrible across the street from the Mohawk Mall. There were tons of people out every weekend not to build on the Ingersoll property, 12 acres of land. Most of those wonderful businesses and restaurants we were promised, they're nowhere to be found. I'm urging the town board, instead of criticizing everything everybody else does, I think you all look at yourself and criticize what you've done in your tenure. You know, running two, three, four times for an election and still doing the same thing is not progress. It's a repetition of nothing getting done except to raise in taxes. I really don't know why anybody would want to come here because you live next door to your voter. I'm very disappointed. If it wasn't for your staff, nobody would know your names. And I'm sorry to be so disagreeable tonight, but I've had a very bad day. And when I think about the bad days, I find that you people here, it's nice that the ones that show up, show up. At the public hearing, I think we had to rely on people raising their hand that they were someplace in Niskuna, I hope. But I'm very disappointed. I think you all could have done a little bit better. Now, it's not that we don't love you. You're not our, if you needed help, I'd be the first one there with brownies, cookies, anything. I don't care what street you live on. We're a community. And I think you've fallen down on the job. And I would love to hear you all vote down this ridiculous budget with a $25,000 raise additionally going to the Controller's office. The mess you made out of a Controller's life that was born here, father worked for the fire department, we honor people that volunteer. So, the point that I'm trying to make is it's time that we became honest neighbors. It's time we realize that when we call, we don't want to get a deputy, who I don't think ever left the office, he may not have a key to the office, for all I know, and getting rid of a confidential secretary and putting her down in the highway department, that was, that was a stroke of genius a couple of years ago. You probably don't remember that, Rachel. It hurts that the intelligence that we look for in the Niskuna board member has turned out to be a fraud because I don't think you're intelligent at all. I think you've thrown us down the river. You've done nothing really to honor, yeah, we have a, we have a market in our mall. That's wonderful. And certainly, we're going to probably have more of these united fronts. And I don't think we were able to have any of the movies or concerts because the weather was not too, too good. We have the poor seniors, let me bring that up. We have the seniors that now have one hour less two days a week that have been the original timing for the seniors of Niskuna. You have better senior citizens performances and programs in Rotterdam. You have a wonderful one in Glens Falls. I read them in the paper. You can do a heck of a lot more there. No, I'm not going to move there. I've lived here over almost 50 years. My point is that we're supposed to be so smart, so wealthy. And what do we do for us? Nothing. Except spend money, raise budgets, make ridiculous salary appropriations. And when do we honor someone that has worked in the highway department for over 30 years? I can tell you what her salary is. You wouldn't work for it. The people today are getting honored and revered because of their dedication to the town. And when you talk about Rachel and you talk about, these are people that live here, that have lived here. They don't come from someplace else. And I'll tell you another one, and then I'm going to sit down because I have to go home before it gets too dark. The one thing, and I forgot my point, we had a person, no names, that took a civil service test in Schenectady. They, he rented an apartment, did not live in it, rented an apartment to get a Schenectady County address to take a civil service test. When it was discovered that this person lived in Saratoga, we were not, we were doing residents only, okay? Residents of Schenectady County or the town, that's who we hired, people from the town. And of course, it doesn't say for much if we couldn't find somebody that wanted a job here, didn't live here. I mean, well, I didn't know what to do with it. I had no authority. I was not elected. I was just the deputy because at that time, we had a part-time supervisor. Now, we have a full-time supervisor, and with conflicts in her home life, she's had to step down and not run again, had absolutely no cooperation from a four-man majority board. You all should be ashamed of yourself. My God, if our government, our national government can pass a huge spending bill or have something in common where they cooperated, you four peoples, five people, not once could you come together on anything. It was embarrassing. I'm sorry, Syad. You had an opportunity. You were a wonderful person, but your board knew more than you, or they didn't want to cooperate with you. But I thank you. I'll have to wait to hear how you're going to vote on this. I don't know where it sits. I am totally disappointed. I should have moved much earlier so I wouldn't have had my heart broken. But this town deserves better. And I think you ought to scrap this budget and start all over again. And that's giving back to what's here now and what you hope for in the next four years. Thank you. Good night. And we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
Now, if I can get to the chair, I'll be okay.
All right. So, for purposes of the record, I don't believe that any comments were made with regards in with regards to the opt-out of cannabis dispensaries. So just for purposes of the record, we'll include that portion in privilege of the floor. So with that said, the public hearing is still open. I will do one final call on the public hearing. Okay, so no one left willing to speak during the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Now going to open privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is now open if anyone wishes to speak.
Excuse me, it's very difficult to talk with this on. And I have allergies to fiber. I want to speak about three issues, and I'll try to make my points brief. First of all, I want to comment in an article--
Would you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway, Niskiuna. I want to first comment on an article that was in the paper today about the Ethics Committee. I was a little bit surprised when I read the article. First of all, it is my understanding from organizational strategy that the Ethics Board is not a decision-making board. But it's also not window dressing for town government. Also, it should be autonomous, have some degree of autonomy from town government. This doesn't seem to be the case. When complaints are raised about officials, public complaints, about officials or about employees, and it goes through the Ethics Board, transparency dictates that the public knows whether they were exonerated or cited. This doesn't seem to be the case with our town Ethics Board at all. If complaints go to the Ethics Board that are not publicly made known, then of course, you don't have to publicize. But when they are publicly made known, residents have a right to know. And the spokesperson, with all due respect, should be the Ethics Committee Chair, not the Town Board Council. Because you're now linking it in with the town. And ergo, it becomes window dressing. And again, it's a lack of transparency with a capital T. I'm not interested in which way they voted. I'm interested in knowing how they voted. And even the vote is an opinion. As I, when they vote, they're giving an opinion. But we should know. Why have an Ethics Board? It's a sham. And I don't think the public is too happy about it. My second comment, and I believe it is on the agenda. It's the permanent appointment of our current police chief. I really don't understand why this is on the agenda for a couple of reasons. The reason that you have probationary periods in any organization is because you are protecting the organization and its residents in case the person doesn't work out. Because once you give permanency to an appointment and they don't work out, it's going to cost thousands of dollars to remove the person. If you had hired a police chief from outside the town and that person had fulfilled their probationary period, I could understand granting them permanency, especially if they were moving to Niskiuna. If you hired the deputy chief who had served in the position and passed his probationary period and had experience, I could understand waiving or giving a limited amount of time to the probationary period. But when, and I don't know the police chief personally, but when you take someone who has never had the experience, when you take someone who just received the position two months ago and give him a permanent position, I have to question that. Also, I have to question why you bypassed the Public Safety Committee. It never went through the committee. And Councilman McPartlin, who chairs the committee, was not involved in the decision. I don't understand that at all. In fact, I don't even understand why Councilman McPartlin wasn't involved in the selection of the police chief. And he was not. I mean, I'm looking at you people, and I'm saying, what's going on here? So you bypassed the Public Safety Committee. You bypassed Councilman McPartlin. I mean, he's an elected official, not a plotted plant sitting up there. And you put it on the agenda. And I was told the rationale is is to bring stability to the police department. What stability? They have it. They have a police chief. And once he goes through his probationary period and is successful, I would be the first to congratulate him. And I would think he would want to go through his probationary period. He hasn't been an administrator. He came to the position as a sergeant. Just getting appointed does not make you an administrator. But you have it on the agenda. And if it passes tonight, it's not, oh, okay, so now you took it off. Good. My last comment on this is, because I was told it was off and then on. Oh, it is on. Because I was told before I left the house it was on the agenda. That's okay. That's okay, Paul. My point is the outgoing board should not be voting on it. And the incoming board shouldn't be voting on it. If it's wrong for the outgoing board, it's wrong for the incoming board. So the voting on this is very disturbing. You know, I don't know if you historically have heard of Tammany Hall. It was a big corrupt organization in New York City. And the head of it's name was Boss Tweed, who had control of not only New York City, but even the state. We don't need a Boss Tweed in Niskiuna, and we don't need a Tammany Hall. We just don't need it. So I would really request that you remove it from the agenda. I don't know what the rush is. I don't even understand it. But I don't understand why the councilman, who's in charge of public safety, hasn't even been talked to about it. It never went through the Public Safety Committee. And now we have it. Now on Twitter, and it's been all over Twitter, they talked about letters of recommendation when the police chief was, we were seeking recommendation, which again, Bill McPartlin had nothing to do with. Now, I don't know if this is accurate, but this person claims, I don't even know who the person is, that 25 letters of support were for Deputy Chief Stevens. Three recommendations were for the current chief. And the other person in the running was zero. Well, of course, the two of them were not known to the public. I can understand that. But even those letters of support were never told to the public. You called for them, and that was swept under the carpet. So you have to make a major decision tonight if you're going to vote on this. But I believe it's the wrong move. It looks like political patronage. If I were the police chief, I wouldn't even want it. I would want to prove myself as every other police chief has had to do in Niskiuna. Every police chief we've had has had to go through the probationary period. And again, I'm going to reiterate. If it were a deputy police chief who served here, I could understand. If you hired from outside and that police chief had fulfilled it, I could understand. This I do not understand. And there's many residents who do not understand this move. My next thing, my last point, is the budget. Now, I stood up here last year at the same time and suggested you vote down the budget. Only one board member voted it down, Rose Marie Jackwith. And then wrote a letter to the paper as to why. And her point in voting down the budget was valid. All her points were valid. They were the same points I brought out at the podium. Now, I went through the budget. You have a $17 million, 100,000, whatever, plus budget here. You have used $2,200,000 in fund balance for that small budget over the past two years. Came out of General Fund, Highway, and the Water Department. That's a lot of nonrecurring aid. Now, maybe the controller doesn't agree, but that creates a deficit. And anyone who deals with budgets, they know that. I don't see anywhere in this budget, any place in this budget where you have rectified that and made the budget in sync, balanced it. Because to do that, you'd have to cut. And you're not cutting. Then we have the issue of in the personal service lines, there's all these increases. So you have a lot of increases in this budget. Where's the money coming from? You have the COVID rescue aid. It's all in a lump sum. What are you using it for? People got up at the last meeting, I was not here on November 4th, and asked the question about that. They received no answer. They didn't receive an answer about it. Where are you going to use that? If you're using it to fill the gaps in the budget, you are using federal aid, nonrecurring aid. And you're going to create a greater deficit. And I don't understand what you're not getting about this. Because we, the taxpayers, are going to pay for this. And I'm telling you, if you ever come back and say you have to override the tax cap because you have a deficit, I think they'll ask you all to step down, even the new board. So my point is, I don't expect you to vote this down. You didn't do it last year. One board member did it. One board member acted responsibly, Rose Marie Jackwith. Now, I was critical of her being on both boards, yeah. I don't believe you should be on both public boards. But that issue got resolved, and she stepped down. That was a matter of principle for me. But when it comes to this budget, I do believe you should vote no on it. You should be concerned. I looked through this. I don't see any place where you rectified the holes in this budget, where you've had to use $2,200,000-plus fund balance from the General, Highway, and Water Department. I don't see any place in this budget where that was taken care of. I don't even know where you're using the federal COVID aid. And you haven't even received it all. So you're lump, you have it in there, but you only received half of it. And again, if you're using that to balance the budget, you're in a deeper hole. So I'm going to address Mr. McPartlin and John Delarata, I don't believe is with us. But if he were here, I would say, and I'm going to say it right to you, Councilman McPartlin, when an incoming board comes in, there is no one on that incoming board that has any budget experience. There really isn't. You, and I've worked on grants, all right, writing grants. Grant writing and managing a grant budget is not comparable to managing an organizational budget of $17 million with all the laws, the regulations, and all. It's not the same. So I am really suggesting that those that have been here would recommend that an audit be done, that you would call the controller's office up, have OSD come in, and do an in-depth audit. Not a cursory audit, an in-depth audit. Find out what your deficit is. Find out how to fix it. And they're going to tell you how to fix it. They're going to tell you you have to make cuts in order to get the budget balanced. That's what they're going to tell you. But you need to do that. Because you're going to have an incoming board with no knowledge at all. No one on the board knows a thing about budgeting. And with all due respect to the controller, you cannot place the whole responsibility and trust in one person. That's dangerous. And there's another thing in the budget that I don't understand. Someone told me this, and I thought it was a joke. There was a line they told me in here that talked about it was, that talked about the human resource area. And I found it finally. And that you needed to hire a part-time human resource person to bring integrity back to the town. What, I couldn't believe that was in here. You are admitting that you've handled human resource so poorly that you need to have a part-time human resource person to bring back integrity to the town? Do you know that's in here? Did any of you read that line that's in here? I actually thought it was a joke until I read it. Are you saying that the people, the person handling human resource handled it so poorly? Is that what you're intimating? With all the scandals we've had in human resource, one would have to question. I forgot exactly what page it was, right? I had it marked here. And I read it, and I was like, I mean, I just read it before I left. And I don't want to hold you up, but I really think it's something that, oh, here it is. I think I found it. It's right here. Under goals, under 2022 goals, human resource goals. Hire a part-time human resource specialist to bring credibility back to the town. You can't make this stuff up. You are admitting to the town of Niskiuna community that you had no credibility in the area of human resource. All the things you did to destroy people's lives were done callously, without thought. And now we have to hire somebody to bring credibility back. Do you know that's in there? I bet not one of you up there or watching this knew that was in there. Well, it is. And just on the basis of that, it makes me suspicious of this whole budget process. So again, I would ask that you vote no, as I did last year. Last year, one person votes no, had to write a letter to the Gazette explaining why she voted no as a board member. And then the rest of the board, with you as supervisor, writes a letter praising the budget that had more holes in it than, ah, Swiss cheese, maybe. You write a letter praising this budget and saying the preliminary budget would have been worse. That's why you vote on a budget? Because the first one was going to be worse than the second one? And now we have this one. And now you've acknowledged to the community that you had no credibility in the area of human resource. Well, as I said, you can't make this up. And my last thing is going to be, I sympathize with anyone who's taking care of someone who is critically ill. The letter that you wrote explaining why the controller is in New Jersey is now part of the public domain. It's out. It's on the internet or someplace on Twitter. I don't go on Twitter or Facebook. People send me these things during the course of the day. I sympathize. I think anyone who's had to deal with a critically ill person in the family who's been the main caretaker. I've had to do that. I know hundreds of other people have had to do that. It's a very difficult thing. I can't even understand why someone might have to go to another state like New Jersey if you're looking for a transplant. I understand that, because you may not be able to get it here. I know people that have had to go to Florida. I understand that. And I understand it's a case of life and death. But I think the person should be on family leave with pay. I'm sorry. There is no way you can deal, and I know this from personal experience, being the main caregiver of a person who is critically ill and also be worried about your job, until that gets resolved. And it could take a long time if you're waiting for a transplant. The person should be on paid family leave. the person should be on paid family leave and someone should be in here working day by day. Because first of all, you can't do this long distance, the budget, dealing with someone who's critically ill. Secondly, you can't handle human resource long distance. You just can't do that. I'm sorry. And I don't understand, again, credibility to human resource. That should have been suggested? I would have no problem with somebody being put on paid family leave to take care of a family crisis. But you can't do both. So you're not going to vote no on the budget, I know that. I hope you vote no on the permanent appointment for the police chief. And as I said, I do not know him. He may be a very fine person. It doesn't look good. It looks like Tammany Hall, a boss tweed move. That's what this looks like. Political patronage. That has to stop. Because the next board's not going to be very successful either. And you know, I don't always agree with people that make comments in the paper all the time, but a comment made by Mr. Benton today regarding the ethics fiasco, when he said he's losing confidence even in the incoming board, I'm sorry to say, I sort of agree. It really doesn't look good. Because I don't understand why the incoming people, especially the supervisor who's coming in, wouldn't call and say, listen, I'm not sworn in yet, but I don't think this is a good move. Because if she thinks this is a good move, we're in big trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor is still open if anyone wishes to speak.
Leslie Gold, 1919 Pawtucket Avenue. I know I'm difficult to understand with a mask, but I feel much safer with it on. And I'm actually pleased with the town's policies still requiring masks. There are breakthrough cases, even if people are fully vaccinated. Some of us now have the booster as well. But still, it's safer with the mask. So I'm very pleased that the town's doing that still. One thing caught my eye in the paper this morning, which was the editorial dealing with the document posting law starting today, which requires that our will of adoption to meetings be posted at least 24 hours ahead of the event. I trust that means I will not be seeing postings done at the last minute, like the same day as the meeting. I think that's very important. I'm going to say something. Civil service law requires probationary periods for almost everything, almost all positions. Not elected ones. Sometimes we wish they did. But the point of probationary period is for the person to be able to show that he or she has mastered the job sufficiently to get permanent status. There's a minimum and there's a maximum. I was in a traineeship that was supposed to run two years. The minimum was 18 months. And I was very pleased when not everybody was doing it in 18 months. I was done in 18 months. I demonstrated my capability. My employers were very happy with me. And it was done. So I don't know all the discussion behind the move to appoint the chief permanently. I don't feel qualified to judge that. But I will note that it's legal, it's done, it is not political, I don't believe. I do know there's a need for stability. And I'm going to trust your good judgment on this. I trust you've thought through carefully. As far as the budget goes, I'm not totally happy with it. I think you all know that. I will still push for the human resources position to be independent of the Controller. I don't see how it can be effective otherwise. I have issue with a number of other things throughout. But the bottom line is, there were three budget workshops that were available to the public, either in person, virtually live time or virtually later. And there was a budget hearing on November 4th. So for people to suddenly object now and say you should start over, I'm sorry, it's too late for that, especially since the budget must legally be adopted by, I believe it's the 20th, which is Saturday. I don't think it's feasible to tell you to start over. I do hope the budget process gets even better next year. I hope it becomes more transparent. I know there's, and I will tell you, possibly best to start it. The budget used to be more transparent, and then it was, well, people don't like having their salaries advertised, so let's just leave everything under personal services and this and that and the other thing. But when a new position's being introduced, you kind of want to know about it, including the salary. So I'm just going to encourage and hope that the process will improve. This document is far better than what we had last year. And I will also note that the first budget presented last year was one I would not have supported under any circumstance. And to vote no on what was presented at the budget vote would have defaulted to that budget. So I think the members of the board, including the supervisor, who voted to approve that budget, did what was best at that time. Could it have been done better earlier? Oh, yeah. But the process is what it is. The Controller started her part of it even earlier, which I think is good. I would like to have seen the town board start a little earlier and have more time to think about it, especially since several members were involved in some other activities. That clearly took time, you know. I don't think the board's a total failure. I think no, no organization is perfect. I think this organization is functioning somewhat better than it has been. Room for improvement, of course. But I just want to understand some of the tirades I've heard lately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Privilege of the floor is still open if anyone wishes to speak. And last column, privilege of the floor. If anyone wishes to speak, you can do so now. Okay. Seeing now and left willing to speak, I'm going to close privilege of the floor. We're going to move on to committee reports. I don't believe that John is with us at this time. Is anyone going to deliver the Economic Development, Environmental Conservation and Historic Preservation Committee report?
I have not been provided that.
Okay. We'll wait on that and hope that John does this soon.
I don't know who's in the room, but if somebody wants to send me that, I will do that right after my report.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we will move on to Public Works with Councilwoman McGraw.
Thank you very much, Madam Supervisor. I will be very brief for the Public Works report. As was mentioned earlier, the town has now received DEC approval to begin accepting organic waste at the wastewater treatment plant. This is a complete acceptance. We were on a trial period earlier. We passed that trial period. We've worked the entire time with the Department of Environmental Conservation of the state to get their input, to get their collaboration, to have ways that we can do things better. And there was a meeting last week where there was a complete approval of our plan. It is long awaited and long overdue. I want to thank Matt Yedo and his team and everybody at the wastewater treatment plant who has worked very hard to move this project forward. The folks at Barton and La Judas, the folks who have helped us with pulling together everything at the wastewater treatment plant, really have worked very, very hard. And while there's no rest for the weary, there's a number of other things that went on simultaneously. All our well redevelopment project has been completed. We are now able to increase our water production in town, not accepting water from other localities, but in-town water production by 50%. I think that is an astonishing number. I think they've really done a wonderful job, and I'm very grateful to everyone who worked on that project and continues to work on that project on an ongoing basis. The work on the Country Club neighborhood, which we have talked about for a number of months now, Matt Yedo, our, our town attorney, our tireless town attorney, Paul Briggs, everybody at Water and Sewer who has worked to engage the neighbors in the Country Club neighborhood. There's a sewer lining project. It just means that we're going to fortify the sewer lines that go out of the Country Club neighborhood. That's scheduled to begin in the first week of December. There should be little impact to the property owners there. I know everybody that I just mentioned, I know I've been over there a bunch of times. Everybody's just working to ensure that every, everyone over there, you know, is just not impacted or very minimally impacted on the project that's going to be accomplished over there. And I'm very grateful for everyone's hard work. And the Water and Sewer crews are continuing to perform a pump station maintenance around town on improvements so that we're all set for the winter weather. And that's all I have. Thank you very much, Madam Supervisor.
Great, thank you very much. We're now going to move on to Councilwoman McPartland with Public Safety.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm just going to remove this, be a little easier for people to hear, I think, while I'm giving my report. Operationally, the Police Department is finished with the testing of the fifth body camera. This camera system came in at about the middle of the pack. We are still working on just looking for grant monies to get cameras, body cameras for our officers. Fleet and equipment wise, we've gotten our new vehicles that are going to be replacing 601 and 602. They're in the process of being outfitted. The Police Department's going to be making a slight modification to the decals on the police vehicles. It might not even be noticeable, noticeable to some people in the town, but we just want to be forthright in telling everybody, we're making some slight modifications in the way our cars will look. And we are also in the process of purchasing ozone generators for the disinfection of the police cars to, again, be as progressive as possible with our officers, making sure that no one gets sick while they're doing their jobs. Training wise, the RTF Active Shooter Training, October 16th and 17th at Scotia High School went off well. We want to thank Niskiuna Fire District One, Sheriff's Department and all the other departments that participated in that, and we're hoping that that becomes a yearly event. Department-wide training of officer wellness and mental health continues to go on, and we're doing that through our academy module of our Police One. The training on diversity is specific to LGBTQ, excuse me, community and other sort of minorities, if you will, in our community. Our department-wide fall range training and TASER certification has been completed for all our officers. Detective Daly completed his ET training as of 10:29. He's a new, new member of our Detective Division. Detective Kafaga attended a training on investigating cryptocurrency, did this with, in conjunction with the state police. Because oftentimes, we may get residents that come into our department and asking about these things, or having problems with that. So we've got to, we've got to keep up on that. And then the chief reported that our annual assessment for Zone Five Training Academy was due, which went to finance. Citizen issues, so we've got quite a list here. So I'm just going to go over all the streets and areas that we discussed in our meeting. It was South Country Club and Mayfair, Knott Street and Bald Town Road, Wyoming Ave. The chief and I went out and had a meeting with all the neighbors on Story Ave about the issues that they're having there. We've also, we're working with Ray, talking about signage and doing some things that we can do. The chief's also asked the state for a study on accidents on Bald Town Road in Story Ave. So we're working on that to see what kind of solutions we might be able to come up with to try to ease the problems that we're having on Story Ave. Okay, Moore Streets Union and Cornelius, crosswalks at Knott Street and Benetton Village just up the road here. Again, working with our Highway Department on where we feel the best location for a crosswalk will be on Knott Street. Some concerns on River Road with speed. We've done a traffic study there. Leslie Gold, I know we gave you some traffic information for the circle down there by the bridge. That was another thing that was discussed. We've got an uncontrolled intersection at Middle Street and East Street. And also, we did discuss Whitmire about permanently making that 20 miles an hour. As Councilwoman McGraw reported, now we may see some increased vehicle traffic on that road. So we've discussed that also. Community events, the chief reported about the Hudson Mohawk Marathon. It went off very well. We want to thank our Auxiliary Department for all their help in making that go off successfully, along with the Schenectady County Sheriffs. We had Drug Takeback Day on 10/23 here at Town Hall. Want to thank Lieutenant Twitty for working on that. I was there myself. I also want to thank all our volunteers. We had a lot of young people that come and volunteer there. And often when I speak to them, I tell them, when they came that day, they actually saved people's lives by being there, taking these medications from our residents, getting them off the street where they can be properly destroyed. Those young people by volunteering that day saved lives. So I want to thank them for their job on that Saturday, giving up a Saturday to do that. Winter parking rules, I can't believe it's here already, November, Ray's given me a thumbs up. Winter parking rules, as of November 1st, there's no overnight parking on our town streets and local roads, county roads and state roads. No overnight parking between 3:00 and 6:00 a.m. This is done because, you know, it is the winter and it does snow here, and it can start snowing in November. So we just want to make all our residents aware that that is now in effect. Town Clerk, she reported about the APF contracting and ongoing. We're still working on trying to find someplace to take dangerous dogs if we should have them in our custody. And I'm just looking through my notes. It was a very extensive meeting with the, the chief's got about three pages here of notes. Usually it was two, but everything's gone well. Personnel wise, we've filled the lieutenant position, as you know, with Joe Twitty. Our executive secretary, Chris O'Brien, is now full-time in the Police Department. I thank the chief for all his work on both of those. Other things we discussed was closest car with the state police, an MOA with them, and a MOU for receiving $42,000 in grant money for discovery reform. That's where those grant monies came from. And that concludes my report. Our next meeting will be November 30th here at 8:00 a.m.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes.
I do have an economic development report. Just in, I have an economic development report.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Can I just go to one question to Councilmember McPartland? Earlier, it was said that you were not involved in the process of hiring the police chief, and you didn't really know anything about that. That was a misspeak, right?
That is absolutely a misspeak. You are exactly correct. That was a misspeak. I was involved with it. We've had, we had many meetings, we had many executive meetings where that's where we discuss these things, promotions and the like with employees of the town. So you're absolutely right. I was involved.
And you were involved in all the interviews and you were well aware.
Absolutely, I was.
You were involved in every step and all of the recommendation letters, many from family members. You, you saw all of that, right? I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
These are things that, you know, we don't do the back and forth, but you're right. Those are, that's exactly correct.
Yeah, right. We don't do it with residents, and that's why I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew. I would certainly hate for the chairman of the Public Safety Committee to look like he wasn't involved at all in hiring a police chief.
I was very involved in that.
Great. So economic development, on behalf of Councilwoman Delarada, the Tree Council did a wonderful event. They had a fall photo contest. All the winners went out to the town. They're on the website, they're on the Facebook page. It was really a terrific event. I want to thank Tree Council for doing that. I really think it brought out the best in our community, as so often we do. Thank you to all the residents who participated in this, of all ages. It was really just a wonderful, wonderful event. And thank you to our economic development team and Laura Robertson and everyone in her office for looking at gathering these photos, promoting the opportunity, and then the Tree Council voting on them. So thank you all very much. Um, we've talked about this before, but I'm going to mention it again because I'm very excited about it. Um, the Conservation Advisory Council and the Natural Resources Inventory Advisory Group, the committee, um, they have received a grant to proceed with the natural resources inventory. I've been very excited about that. I've been honored to be part of that group. Um, we meet monthly and the Niskiuna Community Foundation is helping fund some of the initial work of the group to get the national, natural resources inventory off the ground. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved in that. We have a wonderful, multi-generational committee who really are, have dug in to this. And we've brought in outside consultants, people who have done it in other areas in the state. And we're really looking forward to moving this forward on behalf of, um, the entire community. It's really something very exciting. Um, the electric vehicle chargers, which is something that's very near and dear to my heart. Um, all the permits have been issued to install the electric vehicle chargers around the town. As I've talked about month after month, um, this past year, I'm really excited that we're gonna, we'll have, um, we'll have them at Blatnick, River Road, Lyons Park. We're going to collaborate with the county to have it at the library. That will augment what we already have at Town Hall. I've been working very closely with the school board, I mean, the school district. And having onsite at the school facilities will also be something that we see in the future. So we're really moving ahead on this. And I think a lot of residents are very excited about it. Um, the planning board is finalizing a three-story mixed-use building at twenty-one forty-seven Eastern Parkway. I think m- many folks know where that is. It's across from Gates of Heaven. Um, it's a much improved location. It already looks fantastic. And so they're looking at that. Kelts Farm, if anybody's driven on River Road recently, they see that Kelts Farm construction is well underway. They worked very hard this fall in moving it, that project along. I drove past there today. It's really, it's come a, a long way. So I just really want to thank everybody who's been involved in that project. And I think that's all I have. I am finally done now, Madam Supervisor. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the Highway Parks and Rec Committee Report and the Supervisor's Report. Before I begin though, I would just like to, uh, briefly apologize to our comptroller, who has now had a very private family matter discussed publicly here during portions of privilege of the floor. It's not right. And what's also disconcerting is that an internal employee email has very clearly been released, uh, to a member of the public that also contained private and personal health information. So, um, it's unfortunate. Um, we are very supportive of our comptroller and I just wanted to take a moment to apologize to her this evening. So with that said, I'm going to move on to the Highway Parks and Rec Committee Report. I'm going to again, begin with highway items. Highway crews are working on leaf-sleeve pickup. Please check your zone for the scheduled pickup. That, uh, zone map is on our town website. Leaf volume has been heavy, but our highway crews are still running on schedule. Highway crews will be working the Friday and Saturday after the Thanksgiving holiday. And they will be starting their second round of leaf pickup next week, weather permitting. For yard waste bags and cans, there's no set schedule at this time. So please leave your cans and bags curbside if you have them. Trucks are out every day for random pickup of those items. And the Highway and Parks Department would like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. Thank you for those sentiments. For community programs, we have gone through eighty-five gift tags for things of my very own and will be receiving additional tags on Friday. Thank you so much to all who have participated for their generosity and making this a special year for a child in need. Our annual Toys for Tots campaign will conclude December tenth to collect new unwrapped toys for children in need. The donation box will be in the vestibule of Town Hall and will be accessible during Town Hall regular business hours between nine and five PM. Last year, we were the largest collection point within the town, filling five and a half large Toys for Tots boxes. And we're hoping to exceed that this year. Thank you to everyone who donated a new and unwrapped toy. Parents Night Out will be held on Saturday, December fourth, from six to nine PM for children ages four through ten. The fee per child is one new unwrapped toy for donation to the Toys for Tots collection. Attendance is limited to twelve. There will be an arts and crafts project and we will be showing the movie Boss Baby Two. The annual tree lighting will be held on Sunday, December fifth, from five thirty to six thirty PM. The Niskiuna High School Choir will be singing holiday tunes and we will be handing out hot chocolate and candy canes. We will also be collecting new unwrapped toys for Toys for Tots at this event. And this event is very generously sponsored by the Niskiuna Community Foundation. We are so grateful to them for sponsoring this event this year. For senior programs, the senior center is busy with exercise, bridge, mahjong, pickleball, art, and lunches. The senior center is planning some holiday festivities. And on Tuesday, December seventh, uh, there will be, um, some very special holiday festivities on that day. And there are also fun activities planned for throughout the month of December. Please see the senior center's calendar and menu online at our town website. And the next meeting of the Highway Parks and Recreation Committee will be on Wednesday, December first, at eight fifteen AM. That concludes the Highway Parks and Rec Committee Report. I'm going to move on to the Supervisor's Report. And I'm going to use the Supervisor's Report to, uh, discuss specifically the budget. So tonight, we will be considering adoption of the amended preliminary budget, which if approved, will become the final adopted 2022 budget. I want to take a moment to detail the changes that are reflected in this document. So for the general fund, there are adjustments to reflect a two percent COLA increase. That's a cost of living increase for non-represented employees, totaling approximately fifty-three thousand dollars. And this is spread across the personal services line item. Including this increase is especially important, both due to the national inflationary increase in the cost of living and the fact that non-represented employees did not receive a COLA increase on the 2021 budget due to pandemic-related fiscal impacts. There is a five thousand dollar increase to Shade Trees budget to ensure our continued designation as a tree city by the Arbor Day Foundation and to provide adequate budget for the planting of new trees and the replacement of dead trees throughout the town. There is an approximate seventeen thousand dollar increase to employee benefits. And this is for social security and health insurance, which in part covers the transition of a part-time position to a full-time position in the justice court. There is also an approximate twenty thousand dollar increase to the Supervisor's Budget in recognition of the fact that my successor, town supervisor, may wish to hire a full-time director of operations. This increase provides the budget necessary to do that. So that's essentially taking a part-time position and funding it for full-time, um, in the event that that's, uh, what my successor wishes to do. In the highway fund, there are adjustments to the personal services line to reflect, uh, adjustments for the highway and parks working crew leaders. To the water and sewer funds, there are adjustments also to the personal services line. And these all reflect the two percent cost of living increase for non-represented employees. All of the aforementioned adjustments do not impact the tax rate and it remains at a zero percent residential property tax increase, so no tax increase, while appropriating only forty-six thousand dollars of general fund balance. And that also includes a appropriation of fund balance in the Sewer Six Fund Balance of approximately a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So in total, no more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance appropriation across all funds. So it's a drastic decrease from the amount of appropriation that was used last year. And that concludes my Supervisor's Report. So with that said, we are going to move on to our resolution portion. We are going to begin with Resolution 2021 dash two fifty-six, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract for repair work related to a water main break.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Partland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Yes.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two fifty-seven, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving a second quarter corporate utility reconciliation.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two fifty-eight, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the third quarter corporate utility warrant.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two fifty-nine, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of materials for a water main project on Hilltop Road.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty, sponsored by Supervisor Syad. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Five, four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-one, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of parts for seaward equipment for pump station repairs for 2022.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-two, sponsored by Supervisor Syad. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the disposition of certain surplus equipment.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-three, sponsored by Councilman Delarata and Councilman McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution enacting a local law opting out of retail cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the town.
Thank you, I will second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-four, sponsored by Supervisor Syad. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending Resolution twenty-one, 2021, two thirty-three.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-five, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a fence easement agreement.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-six, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract for repairs to the UV disinfectant system at the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021 dash two sixty-seven, sponsored by Supervisor Syad. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution approving the 2022 budget for the town in Niskiuna.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? I actually had a couple of things Sure. to say if I could. Absolutely. Looking in both directions, to see if anybody else wanted to speak. Um, gonna fix my microphone here. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody who, uh, put the budget together, the supervisor, the comptroller, uh, all the department heads who came and discussed their, um, you know, their successes of the past year and their goals for the next year. Uh, Councilwoman Denise Murphy-McGraw, who worked so hard with all the department heads as well. Um, I know the past twenty months have been an extraordinary time, presenting extraordinary challenges for everybody individually and for municipalities. Um, as the supervisor said, uh, earlier, you know, we, we, inflation is rising and, um, we also need to, uh, attract and retain our talent and our people who live at the, um, who work for the town of Niskiuna. And I think that is one of the reasons why it's so important to, um, do a two percent COLA and to do these increases in our personal lines. Um, I'm really proud of the work each department did to pivot and serve the residents of the town during COVID. You know, coming up with unique ways to be able to get their jobs done. Um, so the work of the local government could continue, even though everybody couldn't be together, um, at the same time in Town Hall. Um, they found cost savings and opportunities to increase, um, efficiencies in several areas. Um, I, for one, am very grateful for the, um, Rescue Act monies, um, of over two million dollars that we received half of over the summer and will receive the other half of, um, next summer. And, and that's helped us allow for this zero percent tax increase,
And that's helped us allow for this 0% tax increase, which I think is, is great to be able to do this for our residents, especially this year. That's been, you know, so, so difficult for a lot of people. Residents have come and commented that, you know, they'll, they'll, will need additional revenue streams for, for next year. And, you know, that, that is accurate. We will need to find, you know, additional ways to, to fund things. I think that's true in, in a lot of years. And I'm certain that the comptroller is starting to plan for that right away. So I'm going to support this budget. I, I think that it, it was, it's a good result in a very difficult, difficult time. So that's why I'm voting in support.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to piggyback on what the councilwoman discussed. First and foremost, I want to thank the councilwoman, Councilwoman Weber, for being willing to come back to the town board and, and help serve us at a time where we very much needed her. We needed her expertise. We needed her willingness to listen. We needed her leadership. And I think I speak on behalf of all of us when I say that we are forever in your debt, Lisa Weber. You were willing to come back. You were willing to take on the most difficult time of year in any cycle at the, at the town board. You knew what you were coming back for. You were coming back to sit in many budget workshops. You were coming back to meet with department heads. You were coming back to meet with the supervisor and I and the comptroller in trying to formulate a spending plan for our community in the midst of the grips of COVID. An extraordinary time that none of us had ever seen before. And you did that selflessly. You did it willingly. You did it because you knew that that was what was in the best interest of the town. So Lisa, thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm not there. I know we're going to have one more meeting with you where you're at least be there for a little while. So we'll make, you know, much more mushy speeches about you. But this budget is a product of your willingness to come and help and make us better and stronger as you always have been. The supervisor has done extraordinary work here. This has been a very challenging two-year period and we have a budget of, the greatest criticism can be that we've added an HR position and I don't even know what else, but that this is a budget that doesn't raise taxes. It is balanced, that takes the best interest of all the employees and the taxpayers to heart. And she's worked for months on this and she's worked with, for months on this with our comptroller. Our comptroller is an extraordinary individual. She has been the comptroller in much larger municipalities. She's been the comptroller of organizations that, not-for-profit organizations that have budgets as large as ours. She has done this. She's been around the block. She knew what she was doing. She also knew she was coming in and feeling enormous shoes of somebody who'd been doing the job for 35 years, who knew how to do it in his sleep. And she came in and, and we had a COVID crisis and she held down the fort magnificently. She has built a budget that really protects the interests of everyone in the community, that protects our programs, that protects our positions. We didn't ask anybody to take furlough. We didn't lay anyone off. We didn't do any of those things throughout COVID. And at the end of it, we are taking into consideration that there is a real workforce crisis in this state and this country right now. And we are trying to do our best by our employees without raising taxes, without raising fees. So Ismael Alum, thank you very much. Madam Supervisor, thank you very much. Lisa Weber, I am forever in your debt for being willing to come back for a few months and get us through this period of time when others were unwilling to do that. So thank you very much. And I think this is a very strong document and I vote for it with great pride. So thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those kind words as well. Is there any further discussion before I move for the roll to be called?
Yes, I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues. Want to thank Ismael Alum and the comptroller's office and her staff, all of our department heads, all of my other colleagues up here on the board table for all the time that they've put in, many, many budget meetings and all the hard work that goes into getting a budget. And I think this is a successful budget for our town residents. And I want to thank everybody for their participation.
Thank you. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-268, sponsored by Councilwoman McGraw. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a temporary maintenance easement.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-269, sponsored by Councilman McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives.
Thank you, do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Councilwoman Weber seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGraw?
Aye.
Supervisor Syad?
Yes.
Four ayes.
And this resolution passes. Next resolution, 2021-270, sponsored by Supervisor Syad. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution permanently appointing a police chief in the town of Niskuna.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make some comments about this. It was discussed by some of our residents at privilege of the floor. And I know when this came up in finance, I had a discussion with you about this. I also had a discussion with the chief about this appointment, permanent appointment at this time. And so then I asked the comptroller's office to give me a little research on this. So what, what I found out is that sometimes we do shorten people's probationary periods and sometimes we don't shorten people's probationary periods. But we do have department heads, some in this room. Matt Yedo, I think Lori Paredes is on remotely. They, they serve their full probationary periods. And let's see, there's another one on my list. I'll have to see. Some do and, and some don't. The deputy chief, he's on the list of serving out his entire probationary period. So I shared this with both the supervisor and the chief about why we're shortening this and what the reasons are. And I also shared with them my thoughts about this. I felt that it would be better for us to wait. In January, we're going to have a new board with three new members. And I said to the chief, I think it'd be better if he had his permanent appointment done with a new board because then it shows that not only did he have the support of the 2021 board, but he would have the support of the board in 2022. And those were the things that I spoke to him about and, and the supervisor about. So, yeah, I know, Paul, you even indicated at one point this resolution was on the agenda and then at another point it was not on the agenda. And here it is, it is on the agenda. So my thoughts about this, that to, for us to represent the residents of Niskuna that we should wait until we have our new board here in 2022 to have the chief get his permanent appointment.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman McPartland?[1758.11]